LMNOP and under other Board of Education Business Item 3 Legislative Liaison Report.
So move.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. McCurry.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mr. Comer.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Mrs. Weber, would you please go over the meeting protocol?
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this morning. For those of you who are participating with us virtually today, reminders, we do have today's agenda available on our website under the Board of Education page, or you can also see the web address on our screen right now. Along with the agenda, once minutes of these meetings are approved, they are also posted in that area of the website if you want to follow up. For those of you who are participating virtually, you can send questions or comments to today's moderator, Bill Fritz. His email address is shown on the screen. We ask that you send those comments or requests for public participation to Mr. Fritz as opposed to posting those in the chat. We ask that you use only the chat only for those items that might be technical difficulties if you're having issues with audio, so we can make those adjustments. We will be going to the public participations session of our agenda here in just a little bit. We do have one request today for public participation, and when we get to that point, Mrs. Weiss will call on you to participate. So with that, let's go on with the rest of the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Weber. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lewis for the introduction of our new Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Yes, very exciting. We're excited to welcome Becky Tompkins to our team. And I would say it was a robust process that we could work through to find our next Director of Curriculum Instruction. She comes to us with a wealth of experiences in curriculum. And when I say that she really just blew the entire interview team away, that would be an understatement. And, you know, as she talked, you know, some of the key pieces that we heard from her that were, you know, obviously critical to our team, literacy was a big part of what we heard from her is how important that is and how her understanding of how literacy connects to all the other pieces that we need to look at as a team, and also really how it connects to the state report card, how it connects to the state assessments, you know, how curriculum mapping and really being strong in all these different areas for our district can impact our district in a positive way. So her most recent experience, she was the K-12 Curriculum Director at Ross Local Schools, which is a little bit different looking district, but a high-performing district in Butler County. And then she was previously at Dakota doing a lot of literacy work and things of that nature in curriculum. So I can just tell you that, you know, we're nearing completion of hiring our team, but it's an exciting time to be a part of this team. It's exciting to just see all the connections that we're bringing into this team and the experiences that we're bringing into this team that are great compliments for everyone. You know, when we did our reference checks of Ms. Tompkins, it was glowing. Everybody had so many good things to say about her and what she brings to the team. And again, just very excited, and actually, if you look on the screen, you can actually see Ms. Tompkins. So we were excited to meet with her yesterday, and it was a quick turnaround time to be able to get her into the interview process. So Becky, and Ms. Wagner, I know you're on as well. Ms. Wagner, if there's anything that I missed as our new Assistant Superintendent, because you led the process, and so thankful for you to lead this process and lead our team of administrators in interviewing anyone. If I missed anything, please chime in.
You did not miss anything, but I also would just like to say how very thankful I am that Becky's going to be joining our team. Her knowledge and experience and her passion and her drive and her systems thinking and her process thinking that my little nerdy brain just loves everything about is going to just really help strengthen our team. And I'm just so, so thrilled about what she brings to us and how she's going to move us forward and help us get better.
The last thing I would say about Ms. Tompkins that really stuck out to me that resonates with this team and, you know, our entire team, including the school board, is that Ms. Tompkins recognized that we're a really strong district, and she was excited about the challenge of coming to a high-performing academic district. But she said, "What I love about it is you guys aren't happy just being great. We're working towards exceptional." So she was excited about that challenge and ready to take that challenge on, and I think that really resonated for us. So Ms. Tompkins, I know that you are on, and we are so glad that you're here if you would like to say anything to the board before we move on with our agenda.
I would love the opportunity to speak with the board and the Sycamore community. It is with great honor, gratitude, and excitement that I step into the role of the Curriculum Director for Sycamore. I am humbled to move into the aviator family fold, and I am ready to get to work to support the students, the staff, the community, to achieve everything and more. So thank you for this opportunity. I am so excited to join this exceptional district and to be a part of the great things that are in store for it.
Well, great. Well, welcome, Ms. Tompkins. On behalf of the board, we're really glad you're here, and we look forward to meeting you in person hopefully soon and having great conversations. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so very much for this opportunity. I'm ready to get going.
All right. Okay, we will now move on to the public participation part of our meeting. I know that, Mrs. Weber, we have one person who wants to participate. Do we have anyone else?
I do not see any additional requests. Mr. Fritz, do you have any additional requests?
I don't. I don't have any additional requests.
Okay, so my understanding is that Mr. Bresson would like to address the board. And Mr. Bresson, just to let you know, there is a three-minute limit to your comments. And as soon as you begin speaking, I will go ahead and start the timer. The floor is yours.
Good morning. My name is Timothy Bresson, and I have a child in the Sycamore School District. I simply want to state three points in today's meeting. One, it is objectional to the parents of the Sycamore student body that these meetings are held at a time and in a manner that limits parental participation and input. Our children are being affected by the outcomes of these meetings, so parents should have the opportunity to attend and be heard. The fact that the Sycamore School Board cannot find a room that will fit more than five people and an IT technician is extremely questionable. Two, at a time when the state of Ohio and many jurisdictions and school districts have lifted or are preparing to lift mandatory masking for students, it is disappointing that the Sycamore Board is hesitant to make this choice, at least until after board elections. The psychological effects that come from wearing masks and the environment of fear are more consequential than what the COVID outbreak has proven to be. The seven-day moving average in our primary zip codes is 0.0, and the vaccination rates are the highest in the county. The child's health and mental well-being is the responsibility of the parents, and the choice of whether to wear a mask or not should be made by the parents. Three, children are not born with prejudice. The Sycamore school system should be free of intolerance and segregation on the grounds of personal choice, culture, or race. To fail to create this environment will simply inculcate our children into these mindsets. It is time to allow our children to grow. It is past time to reserve no activities in that district. Thank you for the time you have given me to speak in this public forum, and I look forward to the time when we can meet as parents, educators, and administrators in a fashion to allow open and honest dialogue.
Thank you, Mr. Bresson. Moving on to the rest of our meeting, on to the superintendent's agenda. Mr. Lewis, Healthy Aids Update.
Sure. So, Mr. Fritz, we have the next slide. And, you know, I think what Mr. Bresson just said ties in nicely to the Healthy Aids update. So I think this would be timely, you know, to be able to be discussing, you know, our Healthy Aids update and talking about our protocol updates. And, you know, I'm happy Mr. Bresson is still on because, you know, our timeline is pretty clear, and we've been very clear about what the timeline for a decision will be. We continue to review all of our data, and he is absolutely right. Currently, the seven-day moving average is 0.00. That is obviously something that is very positive. But one of the things that we've been very deliberate about and talking about over the course of the pandemic is that I can't predict next week or the following week or the week after that. So in order to really make an impact and make a good decision, you know, we're going to continue to watch the data trend and react to data as it comes up. You know, some of the things that we've talked about in our DART team meetings is, you know, there are some variant strains out there that, you know, could be a concern down the road. I can't predict what's going to happen with those strains of the virus, but certainly it's worth keeping an eye on. So we're going to continue to watch that data. We're going to continue to look at our data. We're going to continue to look at that data weekly. And that's something that rests on my shoulders to review every single week. Our DART team is not currently meeting every week because, you know, we're two months away from school starting. But as we get closer, we will reengage that team we have met this summer to have some discussions around the current data and just have a check-in. And I think that's important. From a schedule standpoint, our goal is to bring the board a revised protocol and an updated protocol by the evening meeting in two weeks. So, Mr. Bresson, I'm not sure where you got those dates, but I'm glad you're still on because this is the updated, you know, protocol, and obviously, this was put together before your comments. So our evening meeting will bring a revised, updated protocol to you. And then our final recommendation of the team would be on August 4th regarding, you know, how are we going to react to the data at that point and what are some of the requirements that we'll have? I would say the last thing I would say about Healthy Aids, other than when the first day of school is, is that I think it's an important reminder to our community that if at any point, let's say we do start the school year, because to Mr. Bresson's point, the data looks really good right now. If we start the school year with reduced or lessened protocols or very few protocols in place at all, maybe it is a normal start to the school year. If we see an uptick or a ramp or, you know, some concern with the variant strains and we start to have issues, just know that our more strict protocol could go back into place at any time. And, you know, I have no hesitation to make that recommendation, to put those things back into place should we start having major concerns with, you know, all these different pieces. Because I think the other concern that I'm hearing from our community is that the vaccine is not available to all students under 12 years of age. Now, I recognize that the incident level of students under 12 is very low, but nonetheless, that's a concern of some of our parents. Some of our parents are just as passionate about keeping masking in place. So, you know, we're going to do what we've said we've always been willing to do. We're going to react to the data at the right and appropriate times, and that time will be August 4th, is when that final decision will be made. So happy to entertain any questions from the school board about the Healthy Aids update.
What are our plans for our evening July meeting to allow public participation?
Can we just clarify? There's always, public participation has always been part of our meetings, and we have, as you probably can't see it, our Zoom audience, but we have chairs here. You're welcome to come down to this, and anyone is welcome to come to our public meetings. Understanding that this may be a topic that many in our community are interested in to know what the school year is going to bring, we are looking into a larger venue than our district office. But it has been our practice to have our board meetings in the summer in the district office as to not open up our buildings and cool down a large building just for our board meeting. We also have to acknowledge the fact that two of our buildings where we possibly, or three of our buildings where we would have a large venue are currently under construction, the green school, the junior high, and the high school. So Mrs. Weber and Mr. Lewis are looking into finding an appropriate space so that we can accommodate more people. But anyone is welcome to attend our meetings. They are public. So just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I would always support finding a larger space in the district to where if the public would like to come, more than 10 people would like to come, that we accommodate them.
We do have this item on the agenda on your other board business. I know a lot of you would like to discuss it now, but what we're looking at, Mr. Fritz and I have been discussing the technological challenges around different spaces that we have in the district. But today, these meeting with Mrs. Zellner at Mapledale to look at utilizing cafeteria at Mapledale because that would allow us to have significantly more public attendance. But we also want to make sure we can continue to have the virtual option as well because that really actually has provided us an opportunity in having even more people be able to do and participate and learn more about what the plans of the district are. So the thought is, if we can make Mapledale work, that's where we plan to have our July 21st meeting. But we also plan to have a virtual option for those who want to participate that way, primarily because of convenience. And it's been an opportunity for our community to attend.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, okay, moving along to master facility plan update.
Yeah, just to give you a few quick updates, you know, obviously, if you've been out to Sims Elementary, it's been a lot of changes. A lot of, you know, parkings in place, exterior walls are in place, you know, things are looking really good out there. So I'll just quickly run through some pictures. You know, it is scary when you see pictures like this, you know, two months till school starts, but I always promise the principals that it will all come together. It does come together, but, you know, it's just exciting to see the masonry work, demo work, things that are happening out in the building. You can just see some of the interior classroom renovations. I always say it's a good sign when they're putting ceiling grid in because that means they're getting, they're pretty far off. So, because you don't want to put in a ceiling grid because that usually gets damaged if you're still doing work. So that's a good sign. Green intermediate, again, you know, I'll just give you the quick, you know, it's starting to come out of the ground. That's the most important thing. You see the retaining wall, you see some footings, see some footers coming out of the ground. That's all exciting. And again, from a budgetary standpoint, it's always good when I can say we're coming out of the ground because that means we're kind of away from soil issues, starting to move away from soil issues, which is a positive. And then, you know, we're just constantly doing site work, a lot of dirt moving. I will say I've heard from a few residents over there, please keep reaching out, you know. It's things like during the summer, things get really dry, you know, it kicks up a lot of dust. You know, a community member said, "Hey, could you have them spray down the drive when too much, it's been too dry for too many days?" Absolutely. Please reach out to us. We'll keep, you know, we want to be good neighbors throughout this process. But one of the things the neighbor said is, "I'm so impressed with the level of noise. It's been very low." And I thought that was positive. That means our team's doing their job of being good neighbors. So junior high, again, same thing, coming out of the ground. But if you've not been over there, it isn't only just coming out of the ground, but the theater is about nearly gone. They have, it's been, they're taking it apart bit by bit, but it's, and then the home stands are gone. So if you've not been over there to see that, don't be surprised when you go in. They're gone. So it's, it's moving fast, so. Exciting progress to see, and there's a little bit of, like, that picture of the theater, that part of the theater is gone. So I went over there the other day, and there's a big portion of that that is not there anymore, so. And then our high school, again, I will say.
Mr. Lewis, Commander.
Sure, please.
Yeah, junior high soil, which is still looking good.
Still looking good. I haven't got any updates. I will say that I'm excited and so thankful, I know Mr. Foster, I thought I saw his name on there. Mr. Foster has been really picking up a lot of the construction work and going to construction meetings in my absence. I'm being pulled in multiple directions, so he has not provided me any concerns, and neither has Mr. Dur or Construction, you know, manager liaison, I would say, is someone that's kind of the owner's rep, quote unquote, for us. They usually keep me up to date pretty closely if there's major concerns after meetings, and there hasn't been. So I always just say, fingers crossed, we're still feeling like we're pretty close on time and on budget. You know, weather a couple of weeks ago got us at green a little bit. I won't say it hugely impacted the schedule, but there are at least some, whenever there's a lot of rain, there's always people, the construction managers, I think, always want to make sure they're covering themselves by saying, "Well, we're a little behind. Well, catch up." So it's been very dry lately, so catch up. So Mr. Foster's really good at putting pressure on people, just like I am. So I trust in my absence, he's doing that behind the scenes. But I appreciate him picking up those duties and really running with it and taking care of it.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, if you're on.
And then the high school, you can see what I was talking about before the meeting. You know, I was talking to Mr. Mayor, and he said, "When you see the downstairs, I'm a little bit concerned." And I said, "Just remember, it all comes together." One of the compliments that he gave the team is he said, "There are so many people working in here every single day." He's like, "I'm just impressed with the number of people, the sheer volume." So I know this is silly, but one of the things I'm most excited about at the high school is new restrooms for the kids. Because remember, those restrooms were 40-plus years old. So like, that'll be a big deal to those kids coming back and getting mirrors and restrooms. So silly, but it is important for the kids. So you can see the hub and the new classroom installation, very excited about that. I think it better utilizes that large space to be able to have some teaching space there. So a great addition to our high school. And any questions about master facility plan?
All right. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for the 2021 district paving projects.
So move. Second.
So that change order is just the removal of contingency. So it's a deductive 10,000. We like this.
Great. We can put on this booklet. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mr. McCurry.
Aye.
Mr. Comer.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for Sims Elementary School Renovation Project GMP number one.
So move. Second.
So the two change orders to Sims Elementary, their excess asphalt thickness, it's just when they're demoing it out, it's a little thicker than they thought, so required addition, and that amount of 17,869. And then soil issue is always, you know, somewhere, there's always a soil issue, so they had to do an undercut in the west parking lot for 6,873.
Both of these modifications.
So in good shape.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. McCurry.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Comer.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for Sims Elementary School Renovation Project GMP number three.
So move. Second.
So we had a room change. It was just some room dimensions that were adjusted because they were concerned about, I think it was size of a calming room that impacted a nearby restroom, so I had to make some HVAC changes. That was $1,679. Some electrical modifications in the media center, which was $1,158. Additional change order 18 was a HVAC change that needed to be made, $5,520. Some painting revisions in a couple of different locations, $3,024. And then, most important, had our construction manager not stepped up and helped us out with dumpsters, we could not have moved out on time, so they were able, Runkie was unable to help us. There's a premium on dumpsters right now. So they did that, and we owe a change order of $2,226.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Comer.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. McCurry.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for Sycamore High School Renovation Project.
The change order is a fire damper for $1,413, and it's just basically add a round fire damper to an exhaust duct because it penetrates a fire-rated wall for an instructional material in room 2201. If you really care about that room.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. McCurry.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
And Mr. Comer.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of a change order for Sycamore High School Renovation Project GMP number two.
Second.
This was a great catch by Mr. Fritz and his team and the tech team. It saves us $41,950. It really just, if you look up above, there's a digital clock. That's really what this is. And Mr. Fritz has done a great job of really being forward-thinking and looking at digital clocks that connect to the network so that they actually all stay on the same time, and we don't have to change batteries as custodians. So I know that sounds silly, but very exciting to have that. So, but just changing the different clock system that still does what we need done and save $41,000. So thank you, Mr. Fritz and your team, as much.
All right. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Comer.
Aye.
Mr. McCurry.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the bid approval for bus purchase.
So move. Second.
Appreciate the consideration of this. It's our annual bus bid. We need to go, we're going with Ohio Cat. It's roughly about $88,000 a bus. These are regular buses, no lifts. Total cost of around $352,000. And remember, one of the buses is covered by the grant that Mr. Miller wrote and secured and worked collaboratively, Mrs. Weber and her team. Just to give you a quick rundown, you know, cost per bus is $88,000 this year. Over the last couple of years, they've been between $83,000 and $85,000. So there's still a little bit of inflation on bus prices, but I think still competitive. And I did see that there is a new grant cycle, and Mr. Evans, thank you for challenging us to do that. I think we'll see if we can write for more this time and see if we're still successful since we know the template. So we'll continue to do that. Anytime we can offset some of our costs with grant dollars, it's great, so.
Thank you to Mrs. Weber and Mr. Miller for doing that.
And I appreciate that time history, being able to see the trend, understand that.
You like data.
Yeah, I hope you know that. Some people in the state budget, they have reinstated some bus reinforcement dollars. So we haven't had those for years, so that may be something, and I assume that it will be based on socioeconomic needs and malice driven. So we may not get a lot of money, but at least we'll be getting something, so.
Nothing else. We'll take any dollar.
Take whatever you get.
All right. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. McCurry.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mr. Comer.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the authorization for purchase of natural gas on the interstate.
So move. Second.
Just the typical authorization we ask for every year. And in the off chance that something preferential comes through, we need to lock it up quickly. It allows Mrs. Weber to sign it and bring it back to you with the results between board meetings. Right now, we're pretty locked up until '25, so I don't anticipate a need, but you never know. So I just like having that authorization from you. And obviously, this will not fall on my shoulders going forward, but Mr. Lovell, Mr. Fritz, and Mrs. Weber will be, or Mr. Fritz, Mr. Foster will be involved. They'll be heavily involved in working through that process with our consultant.
I do have a question about this one. So the authorization is through June 30th of next year. So it just gives you the authority to pull the trigger on it. I do think that you've caught the bottom, I think. Being close to this industry, it would be hard to imagine that I'm in the play, but glad to see we're ready to react if there's something better.
React to the data, right, Mr. McCurry? There you go. If we see it, we go.
You have any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mr. McCurry.
Aye.
Mr. Comer.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of a contract for, with Applied Behavioral Services.
So move. Second.
I'm happy to turn these over to Mrs. Spencer to just give you a quick overview of each one until number 15, so.
This contract is for some specialized services for students who require some pretty intensive behavior therapy that cannot be supported here in district. We have a total of six students who are accessing services through Applied Behavioral Services.
Any questions from the board? All right. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. McCurry.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Comer.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the contract with Cincinnati Center for Autism.
Second.
This contract is for placement for three students who Uh, this contract is for, um, a placement for three students who, um, really have autism and have some pretty significant needs that can't be supported here within district. Again, I think I said three students total.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. McCarrio.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Comerford.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the contract with key behavior services.
So moved, second.
Uh, this contract is for, uh, behavioral supports, um, including behavior specialist, um, consultation. And registered behavior technicians that are required to help support students, um, accessing their educational, um, programs.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. McCarrio.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Yeah.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. Comerford.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the contract that Ohio Valley Voices.
So moved, second.
Um, this contract is for specialized instructional, um, services for students. For very young students who have recently, um, had cochlear implants. Um, and they require some specialized instruction in a specialized environment, um, that we cannot provide here at Sycamore. Um, and so we have a total of three students who are engaging at Ohio Valley Voices. And just so that you know, once their vocabulary acquisition, um, comes to. A place where they are able to return, they do. This isn't a placement that is typically long term. Um, it's really about that behavior acquisition and teaching them how to. Use the cochlear implant and understand, uh, language, um, through specialized instruction.
Are these primarily said very young? Are these preschool students?
They're not preschool. Um, and we have, uh, two students, um, that are, uh, kindergarten age, um, and one is a first grader.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Comerford.
Hi.
Mr. McCarrio.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Hi, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the contract with Skyward Academy.
So moved, second.
Uh, this is a placement for one student, um, who is, um. Uh, on the autism spectrum and requires some specialized, um, instructional services, including a very small, um. Teacher to student ratio, uh, which Skyward is able to provide.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. McCarrio.
Hi.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. Comerford.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Hi, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the contract of on-time many transport.
So moved, second. And this is just for our private van transportation. Uh, we've actually been working with on-time many transport. We did an RFP this past year to see if there were better pricing, better opportunities out there. The RFP did not result in really significant savings or benefits, and the company. The company that we're currently working with, we've not had any issues. We just wanted to do our due diligence to check pricing, and. We didn't see any great savings by switching. I will tell you that this is one of the contracts, Mrs. Spencer knows, this one drives me. Insane, just because it it never seems that there's a reduction. The price just keeps going up, 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 so. Um, I'm gonna reengage Mr. Miller and our team to talk about. Other ways that we can deliver this service, because I think we can do it better internally, but. It would require a an investment, you know, of getting our own vans and looking at that, but. You know, I just wanna do the cost analysis, and I think that's something that you all have challenged us to do over the top over overtime is. You know, really look at the cost benefit analysis of what are we spending with this company? How much are we spending versus? You know, if we bought our own assets, what would it look like doing it internally? So we'll do that again. We engaged that a couple of years ago, and it just seemed. Overwhelming and high costs, but as these costs continue to rise, I think it's time to do it again. So we'll bring you a report down the road about that as results.
Mr. Weiss, do you have an approximate number of students that they transfer course?
It varies year to year. Um, Mrs. Spencer, I don't know if you have a a pulse on your number. Because the other thing they do besides, um, office of student services is if we cannot get some of our homeless students or foster care students. On a bus, we have to put them on a van, so, uh, that varies year to year.
At the time, um, of of this agenda planning, it was, we had twenty-two students excluded. Uh, but again, that doesn't include, uh, any additional students that, um, aren't students with an IEP.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, the question I have is, on these contracts from these different companies, mileage require our rate that they build into it. Does that have a big range to it, or are they tend to be the same?
It's pretty close. It's more based on, it's either like a. A one-way trip or a round trip up to an extent of miles, and they're pretty consistent, I would say. Uh, pretty close, and that's why we didn't see any. Because we've had a good experience with on-time many, and they've done a good job with our students, and we haven't had any. You know, issues with like late pickups and not showing up and things like that. We've had that with other service providers, so. I would say that what concerns me is like gas or fuel surcharges, you know, things of that nature that I can't control. That drives me a little bit up the wall, but.
Do you know how many vans are in Brooklyn?
I think if, from our standpoint, I don't know how many vans they have, and I don't know how many vans they've utilized just for us, but, um, because it's their their model, but. I think we could do it more efficiently with with our own service. It's just having the assets and being able to find the drivers.
Right, that's what I would say too, that's true, something with driver.
And that's why when we talk to them about, why does your price keep going up? They have to keep raising their rates, like raising their. Their, how much they're paying key drivers, and I think we probably have all experienced that in other places that. You know, people are wanting to, there's, there's a lot of opportunity for jobs out there, I guess.
Okay, well, thanks for keeping your eye on that. We look forward to seeing that in the future. Um, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. McCarrio.
Uh.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
And Mr. Comerford.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the exempt hourly pay schedule for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two contract year.
So moved, second. This would just be, um, your typical process that we align our exempt hourly employees to OPEC and. Uh, you know, it's a recommendation of fifty fifty-five cents per hour. Uh, it's forty cents plus fifteen cents step. You know, we look at our exempt staff. Uh, if you recall, our exempt staff don't get steps every year. They have to go through a a three-year process until they get to the top of the scale, but every three years they get a review and a step. Uh, after three years, so.
Any questions from the board?
I don't know if this is what.
I was just gonna add, just a reminder, this would be the clerical hourly staff that work in care in the district offices, our custodial supervisors. Our exempt secretarial staff in the building, and our supervisors of our child nutrition program at each building. Um, the cost is is right around fifty thousand dollars for this proposal.
Any questions from the board? All right, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. McCarrio.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
And Mr. Comerford.
Hi.
Motion passes. Anything else, Mr. Lewis?
Just one item. I just wanna say thank you, uh, to the Montgomery community. You know, it was a great day on. Um, the, uh, I think it was the third of July, but, um, great parade. Uh, honestly, it felt good to be out there with people, with the band. Um, a big thank you to Mr. Comerford, Mrs. Spencer, Mrs. Weber, Dr. Ray and her husband Kane, this. Mrs. Wagner and her husband Kane, so it was just fun to be together. Um, and a big thank you to the city of Montgomery. They put this together, knowing that our junior high was absolutely torn up. They didn't have their normal staging. They staged all the way down Delray with signs. It was great talking to. Neighbors standing in the neighborhood, talking with Mr. Comerford, but. The police got pulled away from the parade for an emergency on the highway. So the parade got delayed, but it didn't dampen the mood or the excitement, the people that were there. Uh, it wa- it was a lot of fun, so I I'm sorry, I know some of you were out of town and couldn't make it. I look forward to the next one when we're all together, because I will tell you, my kids felt like heroes riding on a golf cart. They were throwing candy, and they felt like part of the Sycamore community. Um, so a huge thank you to the community for making them feel welcome. So, um, it it was.
And I would just add, as usual, the band did a great job and were, uh, one of the most popular units in the parade, as well as. Uh, Lady Liberty who walked behind us, which meant we were in a lot of video and pictures of the day.
A big thank you, Mark. A big thank you to Mr. Grollty, uh, you know, leading the band, and and Dr. Ewing and the rest of the band staff. They just. I love, I don't know if you've seen their updated logo and their updated, um, gear. I I was like, wow, I like that logo. It just, it's sharp. It just, it it really pops, so. It was a good day for Sycamore, a good day for the city of Montgomery.
Well, one thing I would add, Mr. Lewis, and, uh, for my fellow board members is, um, I was curious to how it would be attended, and it was, um. Very well attended, uh, shoulder to shoulder the whole way. I actually did my own informal, uh, count. Of how many people were wearing masks versus not wearing masks, just as a data point.
My fellow geek.
We had. I could see, I I, it could have been a different number, but I could see three masks. Six. I thought I saw three masks, so it's under ten, we'll say, probably for sure. On a, on a population of well over a thousand, uh, probably a couple thousand. So just just as a data point, that's just the community, um.
Well under one percent.
Yes.
The other thing that was funny is, I think, by the, by the middle, well, the middle start of the parade, because we sat for about two hours from lineup to the time it started. I think Mrs. Wagner wanted to take the horn away from me, so the athletic department allowed me to borrow their six-passenger golf cart. And it had a horn by your foot, so I just kept blowing the horn, and she was like, if you don't stop.
Yeah, we're gonna make sure that he doesn't have any kind of an air horn or something in his office, because he had way too much fun, way too much fun.
She was counting for a while of how many times I blew it till we, I I was respectful until we got to the band, because the band joined us at Tree of Life. So we came off of Delray and I was blowing my horn all the way, so she stopped counting at like ten.
Sounds like a good time. Well, I'll be there next year. All right, um, anything else?
Nope.
All right, moving on, um, I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, and just as a reminder, this includes, um, addendum items one C, two K, L, M, and O, and P.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballen.
Hi.
Mr. Comerford.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. McCarrio.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Hi. Um, uh, moving on to other Board of Education business, uh, strategic planning updates.
I would just say, little update, at this point, we are, uh, still, you know, progressing, and. I think what I would say is that the hiring of team members has been a key part of the strategic plan, because. Yeah, the people that we've interviewed have mentioned the strategic plan, how excited they are about what they read. How aspirational they believe that our strategic plan is, and how excited they are to get to work, so. Uh, we will reengage our project teams very soon, uh, and continue that work, and. Uh, our goal is we are going to set a schedule for the entire year, uh, about, you know, planning meetings. And then I would also like to get with the school board about setting some of those. Co-lead meetings with you to have some discussions with the individual co-leads and and board members that are closely tied to it, so. Really appreciate the responses from the school board about, you know, your interests of teams, and I'll get that back out to you very soon of what teams that you'll be serving on.
Excited. Can't wait, can't wait to get my envelope. All right, um, okay, moving on, we did talk about board meeting location. As we get more information about, um, our evening July meeting, we'll post that on the website, so please stay tuned for that. And our last item is legislative liaison report, Mr. McCarrio.
Yeah, thanks for adding this. Um, I did wanna, there's a lot of hot bills, he had some questions last time about status, so I just wanna kind of give a rundown on five of them. Um, one is Senate Bill one, if you remember the financial literacy bill that passed the Senate thirty-two to oh.
Oh, great.
May twelfth, that, uh, in committee, committee, and it's, and it's still in the House Committee in the primary and secondary education, so. That's its current status. Um, the second one that I wanted to touch on is. Let's see, we have House Bill two forty-eight. This was the one to prohibit mandatory vaccinations, as you recall. Um, we catch all vaccinations, it's not around COVID. Um, the fourth hearing was on June fifteenth. The fifth hearing took place on six twenty-two. If you recall, at up to those hearings, it was all proponent testimony. A whole wave of witness testimony, uh, opposing the bill, uh, came in, nearly two hundred and fifty opponents. Uh, most were medical professionals. Um, Dr. Andrew Back from our dart team, uh, was one of the many offering testimony in those hearings too, so that one's still alive in discussion. Um, next one I wanted to talk about is House Bill eighty-two, which, um, this is the bill that, whose original purpose was to make SAT and ACT optional. I mean, they got folded into being kind of the reform report card reform bill. Um, the bill passed overwhelmingly in the House at ninety-one to three. Passed in the Senate overwhelmingly, thirty-two to one, so everybody's behind these changes. Um, starting this year, the A through F performance metrics, um, will be replaced with stars. To represent the magnitude of performance and arrows reflecting the direction. So it's interesting that they're bringing that into the metric. Um, accountability for poor performance will begin with the following school year, so the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, realizing this is a challenging year. Um, a welcome addition by the House and Senate was brought by the OEA, which is the, uh, teacher union. They are adding a component called opportunity profiles, and this is really interesting. Because this adds twenty-two pieces of additional statistical metrics to the report card. Um. A sample of some of them, average pupil to teacher ratios by grade level. Uh, percent of teachers or principals with less than three years' experience, and I know that's been a hot topic with this board administration. Like to see that experience, and the percent of students that are in all-day kindergarten. Nineteen other parameters that they're gonna be tracking now and going forward, so it gives you a little bit more to compare district to district. Um, I think that's a very welcome thing, so great add-in, by all. Um, the other one, let's see. Have to touch on, let's see, uh, House Bill three twenty-two. This is the regarding. The teaching of certain current events raised in sex. You remember the critical race theory that I talked about last time. Uh, first hearing was June fifteenth, second hearing took place on June twenty-third. Um, so far, there's been a total of seven witnesses, all with proponent testimony. Um, the OEA, which is the student or teacher union president, has released a statement opposing the bill. And any legislation seeks to ban the teaching of divisive concepts. No opponent witness testimony has been presented in committee hearing yet. Um, or is part of the legislative record yet, so yeah. I will update you if that comes to be. Um, and then the last one, obviously, have to talk about this one, House Bill one-ten. Um, which is the MBR budget bill every two years for state, um, passed on time, which is exciting. Passed in the House eighty-two to thirteen, passed in the Senate thirty-two to one. Um, for schools, it's an overhaul of the funding formula. We've been talking about that for K through twelve, that will direct hundreds of millions more to education. Um, the formula will use both property and income wealth to determine our district share. And the bill also significantly increases publicly funded childcare, interestingly. Mrs. Weber, I don't know if you have, uh, comments about impact to Sycamore specifically around the formula.
Yeah, just really quickly, thank you, Mr. McCarrio. Um, the, uh, fair school funding. Uh, formula has been pulled into the state budget as the new way that schools are going to be funded, at least for the next two years. That was one of the compromises of. Putting that into the bill, and that gives the legislature a chance to look at it again in two years. Um, the thought process is, though, now that it's in the bill, now that it's in in law, that it's gonna be more likely to remain in law. Uh, for us, uh, just from a funding standpoint, it does restore the approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that. Uh, we will reduce from our formula last year, and then looks to add about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. In twenty-one, twenty-two, and about three hundred and twenty-six thousand in twenty-two, twenty-three. So a little bit of additional funding. It still falls short in providing us fair, what we consider fair funding in in line with what our our private schools across Ohio receive on a per people basis. So we still need to work, work on that going forward. If this bill does, you know, if the formula does go into effect and would be fully funded, which at this point it is not, it would be much, much, much closer to being able to fulfill that. So within the formula, so we may, we may be able to reach that at some point. So we'll continue to to talk about that for about a few years. I am going to be participating in a webinar tomorrow to get more information about what's in the state budget bill. And I'll I'll come back with some additional information at the next next meeting. A little more comprehensive update.
Mrs. Mrs. I have a question.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Weber, just so I understand clarification of what you had just said, that the private schools are getting a funding amount and with this formula, we would get less than the private schools.
Yes, and that's been the case for forever.
Yeah, that part, that 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 was the lead into my question.
Right.
My question is, private schools aren't subject to the same regulations from the state as well. So we have less funding and more regulations to contend with than our private school counterparts. Am I understanding that correctly? That does not make any sense to me.
Right. And I I credit Mrs. Weber, even before I ever joined board, this has been, she's led this issue to to get to that. And she's made really good inroads in almost getting there. I feel like we're close.
In fact, we've had a result a couple of times and then the budget bill, it was like I'd be tipped by the governor.
It's a lot.
Three, three times. So continue to work, work toward it. I within this budget cycle, the one thing that I thought might help us a bit is that the Chair of the Senate Budget Committee is in a district area similar to ours in the same circumstance. So he is typically trying to to get that to happen, but they had a few other things. This time, I think, we're just trying to look at the funding formula itself. So and I think also just that hope that eventually it's gonna, it'll fade and it will work itself out. But.
I echo Mr. McCarrio's. Thank you for your efforts on this. That makes absolutely zero sense to me, that a private school would get more funding than a public school.
Yeah. And the formula has a wealth index. And the parochial school has just a pot that gets distributed, doesn't have the wealth index. So that's why. And the numbers just are missing.
Okay.
And then we get the man, as you suggest.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCarrio. I will refrain from commenting on that. Okay, anything else from the board? Mrs. Weber?
We need a motion to go into executive session.
Right. Mrs. Spencer, do you have anything else?
Do you?
Mr. Lewis, okay. I need a motion to go to an executive session. Go into executive session in accordance with ORC one two one dot two two G one, employment dismissal, evaluation, compensation, discipline of a public employee, appointment of a public official or regulated individual, and in accordance with ORC one two one dot two two G two, purchase of property.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. McCarrio.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
And Mr. Comer.
Aye.
We will go into executive session. We do not anticipate any more votes. Thank you very much for joining us this morning at our meeting. Have a great day. Thank you.